Hi. My name is Izzy Wagner, and I'm a senior at Edina High School, and I'm one of the organizers of this forum. And I'm also the student board member of League of Women Voters Edina, which co-sponsored this event with the Edina Debate Team. And it's a pleasure to welcome all of you to hear from the school board candidates tonight. We were very purposeful in planning this event, that it be student-led and put emphasis on student concerns. And for this reason, all the questions that will be asked during this forum were created from subject areas and questions submitted by students in Edina. And although the vast majority of students will be unable to vote in the upcoming election, students' lives will be directly impacted by school board elections. So we planned this forum in an effort to bring student perspectives to the forefront. And we hope that the answers provided tonight will help voters make informed decisions about which candidates they vote for. And I would last like to thank the League of Women Voters Edina, especially Susan Clark, Julie Rogers Bascom, and Colleen Feige for all of their support, as well as all of the students who submitted questions and are in attendance tonight.
Thank you so much, Izzy. This is a new experience for all of us, but we're still very excited nonetheless to be able to do this. My name is Ananth Felavalli, and I'm the other moderator of this event. I'm also the captain of the Edina Debate Team and serving on behalf of them. So before I get into the forum's format, I would just like to say a few quick things. First, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones if you haven't done that already. Second, I'd like to affirm Izzy's sentiment and extend a thank you to the League of Women Voters, and also to the candidates for their graceful participation in this event. And finally, I'd like to extend a quick thank you to Joe Schmidt, who's the head of the Speech and Debate Team at Edina and who has provided a vast amount of support, which I'm really appreciative of. We at the Edina Debate Team hope to forge a lasting relation with the League of Women Voters and make student-led forums a staple of Edina elections. So in years to come, hopefully this can stay part of Edina tradition. Now, onto the structure of the forum itself. All candidates who filed for office and who will be on the November 2, 2021 ballot were invited to this forum. That includes Nicole Schnell, who was unable to attend sadly. As far as the forum's rules and format goes, first, all entrants, and it seems like this is already happening, must wear a mask. So that's good. Just make sure your masks stay on during the actual forum itself. No one will be allowed to enter the forum now that the council chambers are filled, and all candidates will remain seated throughout the entire candidate forum. The speaking order was assigned before the forum, and we'll rotate with each question. So no candidate is going to get to answer first every single time, out of fairness to the other candidates. Now, each candidate will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to make an opening statement and 1 minute to answer each question. Candidates will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to also make a closing statement. A volunteer will time responses and indicate to candidates when they have 45 seconds remaining, 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and when they must stop. Excuse me. So we're not actually going to do 45, so it'll just be 30 and 15, it looks like. And the moderator will ask all of the questions. We've attempted in good faith to cover topics of interest indicated by the submitted questions. This forum is also being video recorded, so please hold your applause until the end of the forum. So now what we're going to do is we're going to start out with opening statements from each one of the candidates, and we'll start with Mr. Arum. You have 90 seconds to introduce yourself and talk about whatever you'd like during this time.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the Edina Debate Team for hosting this forum and giving me a chance to share my commitment to this community and the schools in general. I'm a longtime resident of Edina and a champion of our schools. Generations of my family have grown up in Edina, and even before having children, Ally and I made the conscious decision to have our children go to Edina schools and raise our three kids here because of our commitment to public education and our connection to this community. Making the decision to run for Edina School Board has been an introspective and thoughtful process for me. I've really enjoyed all my volunteer experiences, ranging from being a coach for kids' sports teams to volunteering with students to help address food insecurity issues across our local community, as well as funding meaningful STEAM projects through the Edina Ed Fund and working with parents and teachers along those programs. I'm grateful for all my families received from Edina as a community, and I'm passionate about making Edina schools, and I'm passionate about making and serving on the Edina School Board. As a member of the Edina School Board, I'll make sure that I represent the needs of all students. And throughout this forum and in my closing, I look forward to answering your questions and sharing more about my experience, as well as my passion for the schools and this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Arum. We will now move on to Ms. Allenberg.
Good evening. My name is Erica Allenberg, and I'm the current chair of the Edina School Board. Thank you to the Edina High School Debate Team and the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thank you to my fellow candidates for running. I've been especially looking forward to this forum to engage with our students and listen and respond to some of the issues that are top of mind to you. I will say that I get plenty of student feedback from my own children, one of whom is at the high school, one who is at the middle school, and one who has already graduated. They're not shy at all about telling me what I can improve and do better. Excuse me. However, I'm sure I will have a broader array of topics to hear from tonight, and the tone will probably be nicer. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm running for reelection for many reasons. One, I think it is very important that as a school district, we have a continuity of forward-thinking leadership for oversight of the complexities of the COVID pandemic while not losing sight of the academic progress and mental health of our students. Two, we have a very ambitious strategic plan with important goals to accomplish this year and in the future, such as the continuation of the launch of our comprehensive literacy plan and launching magnet school programming. Three, I'm steadfast in my commitment to ground my decision-making and guide our school board around the needs of all students. All students that enter our district deserve to thrive in our school system, and it's my personal mission to work towards this goal. This is how we reach our vision, for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive. I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Allenberg, and we'll now move on to Mr. Michelson.
My focus tonight is on the world that you kids, you students, will grow up in. With masks, it's a little hard to tell, but it looks like we have anywhere from seven to 10 students. And in my thinking about what kind of world you're growing up in, we are certainly focusing a lot in our society and certainly in Edina Public Schools in diversity, inclusion, and equity. One of my concerns about this is that it, I think it's leading to the tribalizing of our society and placing race over our humanity. Every concept in humanity has a limiting principle, including diversity, inclusion, and equity. And I think that we ought to visit some of these potential limiting principles, such as merit. Does merit ever trump identity? How about beneficial assimilation? I'd like to have a discussion about that. And then the larger question is, should diversity, inclusion, and equity be the focus of our schools, or should education be the focus of our schools? The next question I have is, I believe the school board is to represent you, the students, your parents, and the taxpayers. I don't know if you do, but I do. And I believe that that is our loyalty. The teachers have their own association. It's called the union, and that represents them. And I'm not union-endorsed and proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Michelson, and we'll now move on to Mr. Birdman.
Thank you, and good evening. What a wonderful opportunity to speak to one of the most important stakeholders in our community and for the job that we're all running for. I appreciate that. My name is Michael Birdman. I am a resident of almost 20 years here in Edina. I have a fifth grader and a seventh grader. And I'm running because I believe that while we have a wonderful school system that's helping to teach and raise our children on the principles of academics and the needs of what they're going to need to have for when they grow up, I think we have a lot of opportunity to also improve on where we are. I look forward to the questions this evening from our students to understand what their needs are, what their priorities are. A lot of times, adults do a lot of adulting without necessarily consideration for what some of the students are that we have in front of us. And I think it's important for us to demonstrate that we can listen, we can try to understand and acknowledge what the concerns are of all stakeholders, while we then try to find agreement on how we can move forward successfully. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Birdman, and finally, we have Ms. Gableer.
My name is Karen Gableer, and I'm excited to be running for Edina School Board. I want to thank the Edina High School Debate Team and the League of Women Voters Edina for hosting this forum tonight. For the past decade, I have been a champion of Edina Public Schools through my words and actions, from being the PTO president at the Early Learning Center and at Highlands Elementary, to co-chairing the past two school referendums, to my current position as co-chair of the Edina Education Fund. That coupled with the fact that for over the past 20 years, I have been a classroom educator at the elementary, middle school, and now post-secondary level. That means that I have experience giving the MCA, being the teacher in the parent-teacher conferences, and walking beside students as they work through life celebrations and struggles. I am excited for this next chapter of Edina Public Schools. We have a strong leader in our new superintendent. We have an ambitious and innovative strategic plan, and we have good things happening in Edina Public Schools every day. Just look at this forum being put together by our very own students. I believe my experience and my skills make me ready to join the board and help make sure that Edina Public Schools is elevating our work, staying focused on the areas where we have opportunities for improvement, and leading the way in making sure each of our students is ready for the world of tomorrow. I hope this forum gives you a glimpse into who I am and why I believe I am ready to lead as one of your Edina Public Schools' school board members.
Thank you, Ms. Gableer. We'll now move on to the questions, and as a reminder, you'll have 1 minute to answer each question, and the order of the candidates will be random for each question. So our first question is, "In recent years, critical race theory has become a commonly discussed topic in schools across the United States. Because this is such a controversial subject, we would first like to offer a neutral definition." As the independent news organization Edweek puts it, "The core idea of critical race theory is that race is a social construct and that racism is not merely the product of individual bias or prejudice, but also something embedded in legal systems and policies. With this definition in mind, are you in favor of incorporating an educational approach more centered around critical race theory at Edina?" And this question will first go to Mr. Michelson.
Well, that definition can be a little bit loosely construed, because critical race theory has the academic definition, which that sort of borders on, and it also has the broader definition that has been assigned to it that basically means equity, diversity, and inclusion. And if you'd like a reference for this, you can go farther than one of the originating documents of our pre-AP 10 class, written by a Minnesota Teacher of the Year, who actually designed pre-AP 10 with critical race theory in mind. And in this essay, which is on my website, she uses the term critical race theory pretty interchangeably with equity. So it has a broad construct, and that's why I raised it earlier. I think that it's tribalizing our society. It is diminishing the value of merit. It is diminishing the value of the individual and putting race ahead of our humanity.
Thank you. Mr. Birdman, if you could respond next.
First of all, I want to applaud you for at least providing a definition. Every time I've heard critical race theory discussed, people can't really seem to describe what it is. So thank you for starting us off that way. I fundamentally believe that when you look at what we need to be focusing on in our education related to race, equity, inclusion, I'm not as concerned as other people in that we need to understand the facts of what our system is, what's happened in our history, how has it impacted different members of our society, and where it might exist today. Being able to understand what those things are helps us better prepare for how we're going to continue to move into the multicultural and competitive world that we live in, especially for students who are going to be leaving Edina once they graduate into the very competitive world that we're at. I fundamentally believe that we need to arm them with a good fundamental understanding of what that is and how best to do that. The one thing I do not support, however, is teaching kids what to think about that and how to feel about that, but tell them how we actually understand what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allenberg?
Can I hear your definition again? Because I didn't.
Yes, absolutely. The definition from the organization Edweek describes critical race theory as, "The core idea of critical race theory is that race is a social construct and that racism is not merely the product of individual bias or prejudice, but also something embedded in legal systems and policies."
So I have no issue. I think that one of the issues with this topic is that if you ask 1,000 people about critical race theory, you're going to have 1,000 different definitions of it. And I think very few people actually understand the definition that you brought up. Most people, this, I think right now, are interchanging critical race theory with any equity, inclusion, and diversity teaching. So first of all, I absolutely am in favor of teaching equity and inclusion. That work is, I think, imperative to make sure all of our students succeed. Secondly, I absolutely am in favor of utilizing critical thinking and talking about economics and history. We do not do ourselves a favor if we don't prepare our students to understand these complex parts of history and analyze it from all these different angles. And I think at a high school level, it's absolutely appropriate to talk about these topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arum?
I'll echo some sentiments as well. As far as the definition goes, it is, as a definition purpose, it is variable throughout wherever we've been talking about. It's been a common topic and a common thread with a lot of the questions I've received as a candidate. At the end of the day, I really do believe that it's about teaching kids how to learn about, how to think about things critically and how to process information. I think often about sources of influence. We talk about teachers and what they do on a daily basis with the students, but then we also have to look at societal impacts as far as how they influence them, whether it's TikTok, whether it's Instagram, whether it's their own research, or teachers, or their families. All these pieces of it matter and factor into how we view society and the world. So with that said, I think that it's important for us to be able to teach these kids how to interpret and go through all these answers and view things with an eye that's critical, as well as a thorough way so they can make their own opinions as they get through the school.
Thank you all so much to the candidates. It seems like we have fairground to...
Ms. Gableer?
No worries. No worries. So our strategic plan has laid out in it as strategy B, ensure an equitable and inclusive school culture. And I'm really glad that you called out the definition of critical race theory, because, like my colleagues have mentioned, it seems to be an interchangeable term for anything that someone doesn't approve of happening in our schools. The role of education is to provide our children for the real world. Edina as a city is not always a true picture of what the real world is like. The world our children will be going to college in, working in, and making their own way in, and that real world looks different than when you and I, as the adults in the room, went off into it. Our curriculum needs to be challenging, provide various viewpoints, and be preparing students for tomorrow. A classroom can and should be a safe place for kids to ask questions, grapple with difficult topics, and have scaffolding in place for them to make decisions. I think most of the time, our teachers are doing that, and I would encourage more of that.
First, I'd like to apologize. You were sandwiched between Ms. Allenberg and Mr. Arum. Evidently, we skipped over your name.
No worries.
Promise that won't happen again. But we do want to continue to push on this topic, because there have been some interesting comments and questions raised. So I'm going to bifurcate this into two parts, depending on your response to that earlier question. So for all of the candidates that were generally in favor of critical race theory, at what grade do you think Edina should start teaching more about this? Is this something that needs to be incorporated early on, say, in elementary school, middle school, or high school? And for the candidates that are generally opposed to critical race theory, absent some type of framework like critical race theory, do you have an alternative proposition for students at Edina Public Schools to learn more about racism and potential structural inequities? And we'll start with Mr. Birdman.
Well, that's a lot right there. What I would say is that in the definition that you described, critical race theory, I believe that that can have an appropriate place within the high school, especially when you're looking at U.S. history, U.S. government, those types of programs where you're putting it in the context. That's what's so important about this particular topic. How do you put those in context of there? If you're talking about an economics class, where you're talking about what were the impacts of certain sort of racial discrimination policies that existed within certain populations during the growth of the country, I think that would be important. I do, however, think that you can certainly speak to at younger levels, not critical race theory, but certainly about understanding our historical frameworks of what's happened in our country and the formation of it, and the areas that are then there. So if you're talking about certain programs in the middle school, I think you can find ways to do that. But again, it's about teaching our kids how to think about things, not what to think about them in terms of their opinions or their feelings about related to that. I think that can be done in an appropriate way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll now move on to Mr. Michelson.
Thank you. I'm glad you've raised this question. I believe it's imperative that we teach our history, warts and all. That means teaching Tulsa, teaching about some of these horrible things that have happened in our history, and confronting them. I think it's important also to not rewrite our history, that confronting our history is not rewriting it, such as the 1619 Project, which says that the United States was formed to preserve slavery, that there's been no progress whatsoever with racial relations. I think it's important to realize that there's a great deal of promise in the United States and to focus on that. I think it's very important to realize that there are other voices in this discussion, that diversity, inclusion, and equity are not the only ways to create a prosperous and just society, to promote racial harmony and prosperity for dispossessed groups, that groups like the 1776 Unites Project, Black scholars, you can go there. My time's up.
I promise we have not forgotten about you this time. So we'll now head to Ms. Gableer.
Thank you. So the question, as far as grade level is appropriate, when we talk about addressing systems that are in place that have historically kept certain groups back, I think middle school and high school is appropriate. And I've actually, as a person that has a seventh grader, a sixth grader, and a third grader, I was fortunate enough to actually hear a lesson last year around the time that the George Floyd, the Derek Chauvin verdict was read. And the way that that teacher in their homeroom opened the space for students, she did not open it up and tell those students what to think, but she gave them a space to ask questions. And a little boy raised his hand, and he said, or unmuted, and he said, "I keep hearing the word acquittal. Can you help me understand what that word means? Isn't that what we want? A place for our kids to ask questions and be safe?" And as far as the younger kids, I think we can certainly start talking about the value of diversity culture as early as early childhood.
Thank you so much, and we'll now head to Mr. Arum.
I think at the end of the, high school level and the middle school level have their appropriate angles in when they should be teaching those elements of cultural diversity and whatnot. I think there's an element where we can build upon that from the elementary schools, whether it's through diversity fairs or different elements where you start to introduce the different cultures that are around kids. I think by the time you start moving into the formal classes of history and a government class and some of the elective classes that students are allowed to take and kind of pursue their own beliefs, whether it's a sociology class and those types of things, those classes yield an opportunity to start introducing that at a higher level where the kids can comprehend and ask questions. I think that also student groups in the high school level can drive some of those conversations, whether it be, you know, the Black Student Union or other groups that are affiliated with cultural and diverse populations. I think those groups are key to helping the learning process for all students and then also the community at large.
And finally, we have Ms. Allenberg.
So I have a similar answer to Ms. Gableer. I think if you're talking about fairly sophisticated, complex systems, economic systems, political systems, that makes sense to me in middle and high school, just from the sophistication of the topic. However, if you, if we're talking about valuing diversity, inclusion, and equity, that's something that I believe needs to start as early as we're bringing kids into a building together. We can proactively do things like that, and the books that we choose to put in our libraries, in the holidays that we choose to expose other children to. There are a lot of things that we can do that aren't even necessarily overt lessons, but there, it's just a culture that we build to celebrate the diversity of all people within our school system. And to me, that's a foundational system to build upon until we get into middle school, where it's a more academic-than lesson at that point. Thank you.
On the same topic of equity, many students in Edina schools have commented or noticed on a lack of diversity that they've observed among Edina's teachers. What, if anything, do you believe should be done to increase the diversity of Edina's teaching body? And this question will first go to Ms. Allenberg.
I think that's a very, well, you can look around and realize that that's a very astute point. It does absolutely need to be worked on. Studies have shown that if you have a teacher of your same race or gender, you do better academically. But I also want to make the point that having a teacher that is different from you benefits everybody. So this is something that would benefit everybody if we have a more diverse teacher workforce. I think there's a lot of things that we can do as a school district. It's something I've already worked on with the administration. I think we need to set goals as to the number of diverse teachers that we want in the workforce. But then we have to come up with not only a recruiting effort, but a retention effort, because we can hire as many diverse candidates as we want. If we're not, if we don't have retention programs in place, we could lose them very quickly, since we do not have a lot of diverse candidates or diverse teachers in our system right now. Thanks.
Ms. Gableer?
I will echo some of the comments that were just made. We do have some, we are doing some work on this because it is important. And this is a question we've actually heard at several meet-and-greets. This is of value to a lot of people in our community, and I think that is a change over the last several years, that this is something that Edina is prioritizing and wants to see change. We need to make sure that in addition to, it's not as easy as sometimes going out and hiring teachers of color. We need to make sure that we are working with partners to back up and make sure that we are inspiring kids of color to go into fields of education, because it's hard to hire teachers of color if they are not going through education programs. So that is work at the state level that school districts can lobby for, to make sure that we are having more of those partnerships. Where I work at Normandale Community College, I know that Dr. Stanley has been talking to Dr. Esther over there about trying to promote more students to go into the field of education.
Mr. Arum?
I would agree that one of the key points is partnerships, public and private, with the schools. I think that we can do a better job as far as being innovative with the partnership aspect. I think that from the standpoint of where we are today to where we were in the past, I think we are moving in a positive direction. I think that ultimately, we need to create a culture that encourages students to become teachers. And the challenge with that can be is that that culture is impacted by a lot of different things. It's impacted by the board, by the administration, and by the peers around them. So I think it's important for everybody to play a role and understand that piece. I think that the ultimate part of it, too, is that it's more than teachers. It's the staff. It's the administration. It is people around them that can serve as role models to the kids in the school and be a part of enriching that in overall experience. And so I think it's more than just the teachers, but I think it can be a kind of synergy with all the different areas in the school district.
Mr. Michelson?
It's always nice to have somebody like you that mentors you and teaches you, and so it's a good premised, well-premised question. The biggest issue behind getting a diverse teaching faculty in EPS The biggest issue behind getting a diverse teaching faculty in EPS is the pipeline. And where do we get the pipeline? And I think the other candidates have talked about that, too. The best idea I have heard of is an apprentice program, and I believe it was Duluth that was experimenting with it. They were identifying diverse kids within their own district and seeing if they'd be interested in teaching and setting up sort of an apprentice program, starting, I think, their sophomore year. And they're getting some results from it. Now, I think it's only four or five years in the making, so they don't know exactly how far it's gone, but I think it's a fantastic program. I think another thing to be aware of is we also need to affirm the teachers that we do have that are doing an excellent job. W.E.D. Boyson is talented, 10th with Dunbar High School in Washington, D.C., had a lot of white teachers teaching there, too. And so we need to affirm that.
Mr. Bergman.
First of all, I think it's very important, and when we talk about diversity, it's just like other things that we talk about, what's the definition of that? I think a lot of people, first and foremost, go quickly to the racial component of diversity. In my view, diversity is a much broader topic. It's not just based on race or ethnicity, but it could also be about your life experience, it can be about your physical capabilities, your backgrounds, things of that nature. I like to make sure that we have a diverse background across all of those elements that we then have here in EPS. The biggest challenge is whenever you're looking for something in hiring somebody today, as a business leader, as I've discovered, is that you have to know where to go look. And even though, yes, there might be issues with pipelines, and I would agree with that, if you look across the country, there are probably plenty of people who are in a diverse background and diverse experience that we could go tap into. We have to know where to go look and then be willing to go after it, and not just try once and then not succeed and then go back to what you already know, but actually keep trying until you succeed in delivering on the promise of diversity. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the candidates for those really illuminating responses. We're now going to move on to probably an equally controversial area, which is COVID-19 and policies of COVID at EPS. So let's see, with the double whammy, so to speak. Masks have been required at various schools across the Edina Public School system, at the entire school year thus far. Now, some people view this measure as draconian and perhaps an infringement on individual liberties. While others view it as important for public health. Where would you describe yourself along that axis? Where do you fall? And then also, are you in favor of mandatory masking at Edina Public Schools? We'll start with Ms. Gableer.
So I would say I am in favor of mandatory masking at this time. The board has been pretty clear in the information that they've received that we're taking into consideration vaccine rates, which are quite high, actually, in Edina. The amount of spread, community spread, which is actually in the high range, and the amount of quarantining. And so that has actually put us into a level that has us in, a level that I feel like masking is important. Our first priority is to have students in school five days a week, and at this point, that's where we are, is we need to have masks on. I think that we need to take mitigation measures to make sure that we can stay in school. We need to listen to our community health experts when it comes to these decisions. And yeah, so I am for the masking at this point.
Thank you so much, and now we'll hear from Mr. Arum.
Again, I would also say that, you know, keeping kids in school and keeping kids in activities is the paramount reason what we're trying to do when it comes to a lot of the policies we've made. I think that with my background, as far as being in healthcare for years and whatnot, there are certain indicators that allow, that you should look at when you're trying to mitigate the spread of a disease in the community. I think that one of the important things is mitigation strategies is mask wearing. And it's no different than vaccine, or it's no different, it's vaccines, it's mitigation, it's staying home when you're sick, it's washing your hands, it's social distancing, it's trying to limit spaces. All those different strategies play a certain role when it comes to controlling disease spread. I think it's important for us to listen to the public health officials around us and utilize that data in a way that essentially will help us stay focused on keeping kids in school and in activities.
Thank you. Mr. Bergman.
I believe that one of your primary responsibilities is to ensure that you can keep children safe and the staff safe in school through mitigation against COVID-19. There are many different levels that you've already heard that we're doing. So the mandatory mask mandate to start the new year, I agreed with. I do hope that we can move quickly, once vaccinations happen at the five to 12, or five to 11-year-old group, that's hopefully going to happen next month. I have a fifth grader who's 11 years old who cannot be vaccinated as of today, so having her universally masked is appropriate at this time. The goal is to get through the mitigation efforts to where we can reduce the risk, not just to my daughter, but to the kids who maybe have underlying health conditions that, where they might not be able to take a vaccine, but the rest of us can, to help them be able to be in school five days a week. The last thing I would say is that we need to make sure that these decisions are not meant to take away someone's freedom. It's meant to ensure that we can maximize the effect of having all kids in school under the conditions that are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allenberg.
So I just want to clearly state the obvious, but it hasn't been said, that no one wants kids masked. It's not anything that any of us want, but the reality is, we still have COVID going on, and the goal is to keep students in school and to keep as many students in school as possible. And in order to do that, masking is one of many mitigation techniques that we have that I believe provides us the best way to keep kids in school, especially given the fact that we have, we do not have vaccines available for elementary students and sixth graders right now. I think that will be a game changer for us. I also think that we really need to think about "we" as opposed to just "me" in the fact that we have a lot of students that have underlying health issues and are immunocompromised that will not be able to come to school if people are not masked universally, that sometimes are our most vulnerable students that need to be in the classroom. So it's a broader issue than just one student being masked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. We'll finally hear from Mr. Michelson.
First and foremost, by far, I am delighted that we're back face to face. And that, to me, is a consideration that just trumps pretty much everything. So I want to put that in perspective. Regarding masks, masks are very effective in the healthcare context, where you have N95s and you've got tight seals. When you're talking about, in the educational context, there's a lot of inconsistency. The kids bring them to school, they're dirty, they don't have them on, they're inconsistently worn. So it's not necessarily a real ideal strategy. Kids are not big vectors of spread, they're not typically getting it much worse than chest colds. In Edina, we've got a high vaccination rate, and how you define the high spread rate is depending on, if you're talking about groups of 10,000 or 100,000. So that's changed in the past year. In the final analysis, I would like this to be a matter of choice, of the families to choose their own decision, whether they want a mask or not. I would like to give them that opportunity to make that decision, and I would like us to have a clear off-ramp for when we're not going to be wearing masks.
Thank you. As a follow-up to the last question, for the candidates who said they're generally in favor of masking, would Edina Public, what would, what conditions would Edina Public Schools need to meet for our masking requirement to be removed? And for the candidates who were generally not in favor of the current mask mandate, what, if anything, would need to happen with the state of COVID at Edina for you to support one? And the question will first go to Mr. Arum.
As far as criteria goes for removing the mask mandate, you know, I would really lean upon the public health officials and guidance from them and the CDC guidelines. As my role as a prospective school board member, I don't have the expertise when it comes to evaluating the overall variables that are included with making that decision. I think that if the indication and the guidelines are there, from the CDC and from the Department of Health in Minnesota, and then the, they're essentially going to compile all the data points that are involved with making that decision, I would follow that as my guideline.
Ms. Gableer.
So recently, our school board had a flow chart that was presented to them as far as when we were going to be able to possibly ditch the masks. And it looked at community transmission, it looked at vaccination rates, and it looked at school quarantine rates. I thought it was a pretty solid plan. And knowing that our vaccination rates have been pretty high, but we still have half of our population that cannot receive a vaccine, that will hopefully change, that number will hopefully change relatively soon here. As Mr. Arum said, those, that chart in collaboration with our public health officials would be a good place to lean into as we make decisions going forward. And also just making sure that, you know, as we look, for my elementary school student, I've been getting emails pretty regularly that there's been a COVID case. So it is happening. And so to pretend that we are not still in the middle of a pandemic, I think, is a little bit irresponsible.
Mr. Bergman.
I would look at, sort of look at the vaccination rates at the different levels of school. So as we've already heard, at the elementary school and at the sixth grade level, we're not here at vaccination rates. Again, we're expecting that hopefully that will happen sometime in November, so certainly looking before the end of the year, that we would have eligible students at all three levels of EPS that would be able to be vaccinated. That would certainly be a great place to start. And if we can achieve that, then maybe we can get the permission and the guidance to say, hey, we can back off the masks. If we already look at the high school level, where there's plenty of opportunity for all high school students to be vaccinated, and if we have high rates of vaccination there, we might be able to prioritize that school first in order to have lower risks of spread of COVID, and the mitigation will be then there. And then tailor it from that standpoint there. But I'm hopeful before the end of the year, vaccination rates can go up for all levels of school, we'd be able to get to the off-ramp.
Mr. Michelson.
I think my question is, when would I mandate masking, given my answer to the previous question? And everything, to me, is a matter of thresholds and trade-offs. And when do we hit the point where we've got high transmissibility and we've got vulnerable populations? And there's a point at which I would mandate masking, absolutely. And I would require N95s and be pretty stringent about that, because I would want to have the kids back face to face with stringent masking in place, because face to face is so important. However, what's happening right now is we're seeing COVID generally going down. The Delta is worldwide in decline. We're vaccinating many, many more people. So unless there's another brilliant variant of COVID, I sense that we're heading away from mandatory masking and into, again, choice.
Ms. Allenberg.
So I'm not a doctor, and I'm not a public health expert, and my job as a board member is to be a critical thinker. And one of the things I need to do is lean on experts. The CDC says that if you have high community spread, you should have universal masks within buildings. I lean on that advice. The things I would look for to reduce masking is community spread. And then I would also look at the vaccination rates by building. I would also look to see what is transmission within the building. If we end up having prom and prom buses and a bunch of people catch COVID, then maybe you're going to have to mask up after that, or after spring break, or after MEA. And so there's all sorts of situations that warrant the ins and outs of COVID. It's a fluid situation, but those are the three factors that I take in consideration: community rates, transmission rates within the building, and vaccination rates.
Thank you so much. So one of the really commonly talked about topics, it seems, was vaccines. And so I think this is the perfect segue into a question about vaccinations. So at Edina Public Schools, we generally, with a few exceptions, require students to be vaccinated against a variety of illnesses, diseases, and so on and so forth. So when it comes to COVID-19, would you support a vaccine mandate for students at Edina Public Schools, or at least certain groups of students at Edina Public Schools? And to start, we'll start with Mr. Michelson.
Well, first off, I don't believe vaccine mandates are categorically wrong. We have them for all sorts of diseases for elementary school students. So there could be a time in which we would need to mandate that. This is one of those questions I can't directly answer right now, but I can tell you with my best judgment that I would like to see the vaccines, the ideal is for a vaccine to be tested for 10 years on a diverse population. We don't have that kind of runway to do that. So absent that, I'm a little difficult, I'm a little reluctant to mandate vaccines. I'm open to it, but I'm reluctant to do it until we get that wide testing. And so I think I'd like it to be, again, a choice issue with parents and students.
Mr. Arum.
From the first step, I would say that if they are approved on a federal level for vaccines for all cases and by the FDA, I would support them being added to the suite of other vaccinations that we require. If there's a question of whether or not, and kind of what Owen said as well, it's a matter of why, right? Why are we, why would we do it? Is there, are we at a point where we need to do it because the spread and the potential spread is still there? Or is it, are we doing it mainly because of the reaction to where we were in the past? If we are trying to mitigate that going forward in the future, and it is a prevalent issue where we feel that we are at risk as a society on a greater level, then I think that it is a reasonable offering to have it added to there, as long as we still adhere to the policy that we have for all the other vaccines as well.
Ms. Allenberg.
This is something I feel firmly that the state should take the lead on, as they do with all other vaccines. Absent the state taking the lead on this, I would not have an issue if we do feel that we need to utilize this as another tool in our toolkit to keep kids in school. I do not have an issue with it. I also think that I would be more in favor of an option where you can choose to vaccinate or test for parents that do not want to choose the vaccination. We give that option, so it is not only that you have to take the vaccine, so we're sensitive to those that are not interested in the vaccine, but then you have to enter in a weekly testing and have your student test for COVID on a weekly basis.
Mr. Bergman.
I think I agree with a lot of what has already been said. What I would add is, when the vaccine becomes fully approved, it's no longer in an experimental phase for the age groups that are covered in EPS, then having it added to the list of required vaccines, as we have for everything else, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I do believe that you need to have alternatives for those that it might not be a solution for, or they needed some other mitigation components to that. I think we need to always have some sort of an exception for that and not be, you know, a myopic in only going one route. I think also that the goal here is trying to make sure that not only do we get the vaccine for our own protection, but as we said earlier, and I think someone said it and I would applaud that, it's not just about me, it's about "we," that we have a responsibility to make sure we can protect those who are more, are susceptible to the disease, so we can be able to protect that. The last thing I would say is that when you take a vaccine, it's not solely to prevent death from a particular disease, that you also do it to prevent the negative effects of a disease, not just the death. Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Gableer.
As for mandating vaccines for our students, I would need to evaluate and hold conversations with medical and educational experts when that time comes. But knowing that we have vaccine rules for other vaccines and school enrollment lets me know that it's doable and there is a precedent for such policies. This is an evolving situation. We certainly didn't think a year ago that we would still be doing what we're doing right now. And so I think it's within reason to say that when that time comes, it would be prudent to look at all the information, listen to the experts, and lead that way. I do like the idea of the vaccine or test option, and knowing that as a school district, if we required that, I would be on board with us providing the testing.
Thank you. The next question pivots to the issue of busing in Edina Public School District. The shortage of bus drivers has had a significant impact on students in Edina Schools. What steps do you believe should be taken to solve this issue? And the first person this will go to is Mr. Bergman.
Yes, in case anyone's been paying attention, hiring anybody today for any position out in the marketplace is very difficult. So as a business leader, I'm struggling with that in my own business right now. When you look at both the offerings in terms of pay, benefits, and schedules, especially associated with busing and for bus drivers, we need to look at, bus drivers are a critical element for the function of our schools. They're not just part-time people who have flexible schedules and only want to do this part-time, and we need to kind of evaluate sort of the position that they have. And we need to kind of evaluate sort of the position that they have within the district and prioritize that. The school board and the district have already raised the level of pay to try to attract more people. And I think we need to look at this not as a one-off problem that we have this year, but I think it will be a continuing problem as we look forward to the future. We need to make sure that we continue to evolve our recruiting and our retention strategies in order to best protect ourselves to have that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Michelson.
There is a shortage of bus drivers across the state and across the country, and we face that as well. And in a shortage, you have to meet it through the market requirements of raising, meeting the market value of the, of the bus drivers. So there's been discussion about that. That's happening. You have to think creatively. If this continues going on, continues to go on, we have to look at what is required of us. The state requires that we bus anyone outside of two miles. We are busing ballpark within one mile for free. It's, it's, it varies by the age of the student. So if this continues to be a difficulty, we might have to reconsider. Should we charge? Some districts charge up to under two miles. I'm not advocating for that, but if circumstances get dire, we would have to think about that.
Ms. Allenberg.
So first, I think I'd like to better understand the specific issues that students are having related to the busing. Is it an issue with activity buses, an issue with getting to school on time? Is it students within our district, students coming from surrounding districts? So what are the issues we're actually talking about? Because I think that can better, you can better problem solve from that point. So elevating some of those issues would be very helpful. It's been mentioned that we did raise pay for bus drivers. So from that perspective, our district is actually in a way better position than most other districts are as far as having almost a full staff of bus drivers we have now. So that's why I think to best answer this question, I would have to know more about some of the issues that are, are coming up that students are having to come up with better solutions for those.
Ms. Gable.
I have a soft spot in my heart for our bus drivers. Diane, Tom, the retired Mr. Beck. During the pandemic, Diane wrote a note to my kids, just letting them know how much she missed them. Our bus drivers play a really important job in the role of our, in the life of our students. And so as it's been mentioned, we did recently raise their pay. We need to make sure that we are making ourselves as attractive as possible to those drivers. We are, it's our job to make sure as a board and our administration that we are being proactive and responsive when things come up and try to make sure that our bus drivers are, when they say there's issues, that we're making sure that we're listening. We might have to look if this does continue. As was mentioned, we might have to look at some other options. We are pretty liberal when it comes to our busing distance. And so, you know, we have more control over our busing because we own them in-house. So we might have to be creative with some of those things if this would continue.
Mr. Arum.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this because my family's in the crowd, but my dream job is actually to be a bus driver someday. And so if I don't get elected, I may go get my CDL license. But the reality is, for me, is I, I kind of agree with Eric in the sense that we do need to research a little bit more as to why the shortage is occurring. Is it related to the risks associated with COVID and the fact that the drivers feel unsafe? One of the things we realized over the last 18 months or so was the fact that the reality is, is that we can't have a single point of failure, whether it's janitors, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's any subs, it's all those different things play a huge role, that we as a overall public school and whatever else, didn't have the preparedness to deal with the pandemic. And I think that ultimately, this is a wake-up call for a lot of us. And then essentially, we can't buy our way out of the bus driver shortage. We can't buy our way out of that. So what we need to do is we need to be creative in the way we think about solving for that, whether it's distance, distance changes or the ability to be flexible.
Thank you so much for all of those responses. So a little bit of context, Izzy and I were pretty happy when we saw a lot of middle schoolers were responding to our forum and asking questions. And outside of the typical recess questions, which, don't worry, we won't ask about, a lot of students were railing against Edina's dress code. And in particular, one infamous example has been hats, which a lot of middle, middle school students are not allowed to wear in the classroom. So do you believe, outside of just the issue of hats, but just in generally, Edina's dress code is in need of change? If not, why? And if so, what types of changes do you believe should be made? And so to start, we'll go to Ms. Gable.
My kids are still young enough where we haven't had too much issue with this. It's more making sure everybody's taking showers. But as far as the dress code, I did do some research on this. We recently looked at the dress code and it was brought forward to the board by students and it was looked at by a group of students, teachers, administrators, and it was revamped. I think enforcement of dress code is another thing. I think we need to make sure that we're consistent with our approach. So just because, and it needs to be consistent across genders as well. And student voice is really important on this, I think. We would need to make sure that as the adults in the room, we're listening and we're respectful. And for me, this is a real gray zone. I'd like to hear more from those students as far as if it's, if it's hats, if it's, what other issues or what other things do they feel that the current policy doesn't address?
We'll now move on to Ms. Allenberg.
So I would not recommend changing it. We, as Karen alluded to, we just changed it a couple of years ago after going through a process to update it, to make it gender neutral, and to get rid of a lot of things that students were actually complaining about, where it used to read like, girls can't wear spaghetti straps. And it was a little archaic in that sense. So it's now, I think, a fairly flexible dress code. The, the real issue lies in implementation of it. And do different administrators interpret it differently? It doesn't say here in our dress code anywhere, you can't wear a hat. So, but maybe some administrators don't like that. So having that consistency across schools, I think, is important. And I think that I would love to hear some of the feedback as to why people are not happy with the dress code, because that would be interesting to hear if there is something we need to redo within the policy. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to Mr. Birdman.
You said that the, the students were complaining about something specific? I didn't quite hear what you said that they were, they were concerned about.
So a few middle school students have reported teachers forcing them to take off hats and caps, for example.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm not very versed in the particular dress code because my child's in fifth grade. And so just having her dressed properly is pretty much a win. And we're now getting into fall and winter. If we can actually get jackets on, things of that nature is always a win from our standpoint. What I would say is that if we've already taken a look at the policy, maybe the, the, the opportunity is for us to acknowledge what level of frequency is appropriate for us to examine this policy, to take input and to then reexamine it on a certain regular basis or a cadence. I think when you establish that you have every three to five years, you're looking at a particular policy because things change in our culture, things change in our dress styles, how do we look at that to try to address that area? And then I do agree with what's been said as far as making sure whatever you have, you apply consistency across the board. That's important.
Mr. Arum.
I would second the fact that consistency is an important piece of it. You know, when you design policy, you're designing it essentially to address the largest group possible, but leave room for flexibility for interpretation and, and flexibility to accommodate things so that we don't have to address it every, every year, every instance when we're there. When it comes to things such as hats, I think that the consistency aspect of implementing and enforcing that lies within the administration. And it's our, our duty to essentially take that policy and say that we need to make that as consistent in interpretation across teachers and set the expectations as to why and whatnot. You know, we deal with it in restaurants and whatever else. Some places you can go in, you can't wear a hat. Some places you can. I've been to the Monte Carlo wearing a hat, can't do it, you know? And so the reality is, is I think that we have some room to, to help with that, but I don't know if readdressing and changing that policy is something that we would need to prioritize at this point.
And then finally, Mr. Michelson.
Like so many of these considerations, I would like to get input. I'd like to get input from the students, why this is coming up. I'd also like to hear from the teacher or teachers, why they're requiring students to take the hat off, hats off. Are we talking about a classroom control issue here? I want to give teachers a certain play in the wheel to make individual decisions for classroom control. So I'd like to hear what's going on behind this. Michael's point about revisiting this, I'm on the policy committee, as is Eric, and we review all policies in the district every three years. And so this came up, I think, last year, the year before. And we, we settled on, on the policy and it seemed to be doing well. So I'm surprised that this has come up, but if it's a concern, we need to talk about it. The overarching concern is we need to make sure that we are providing a distraction-free environment. And if the clothing that you all are wearing as students is distracting, then we have to talk about that. It all comes down to a distraction-free learning environment.
Thank you. The next question relates to mental health of Edina students. And students across the Edina Public Schools have reported several mental health struggles, whether it relates to test anxiety or a feeling of overwhelmingness associated with homework or any other issue. And COVID-19 has exacerbated existing issues with mental health. How do you plan to address the growing mental health needs of Edina's student body? And this question will first go to Ms. Allenberg.
So first of all, I acknowledge and I'm saddened by the growing mental health challenges, but not necessarily surprised, given the pandemic and the stress put on our students. As a board member, I feel it's my role to monitor what is going on from a mental health perspective to the best of my ability, so that if we are seeing elevated rates, I want to know how we can best provide resources to our administrators to help our students. So that, so doing that is a little bit tricky, but you, in board meetings, I'm actually constantly asking about, do we have enough resources from a mental health perspective? Do we need to give paraprofessionals from a mental health perspective? So at the high level board perspective, that is the one thing that I can do, is ask questions about resources, ask how we can monitor it from the best perspective, and make sure that we are, from a resource allocation perspective, we are trying to give you the resources that you need.
Mr. Birdman.
I think this is one of the most critical issues that we all face in society, not just in our schools. It's okay to have stress. It's okay to have mental health issues or concerns related to that. We need to be able to say that. We need to be able to acknowledge that. And then secondarily, we then need to figure out what are the constructive things that we could actually do to help mitigate it. One of the challenges that we have in public schools is the amount of resources that we have available to us from both a counseling standpoint that are in the schools, as well as public and private partnerships that might be available to gain access to those things. That's been a problem before COVID. I think it's only been exacerbated by the pandemic, both at school but also at home. And so the biggest challenge that we have is figuring out how can we prioritize the health and mental wellbeing of our students and our staff in order for them to show up successfully in the schools. And I think that we need to look at how can we raise the level of priority on this subject because it's going to be with us for a very long time. If we don't start putting resources towards that, we're going to continually fall behind in our ability to manage this. Thank you.
Mr. Arum.
I think from a mental health priority perspective, it's one of, like Michael said, it's one of the most critical things we can deal with right now. You know, having students in the high school and just finishing the high school, I think that the anxiety associated with stress and whatnot is, is real. I mean, I've seen it in my kids. I've seen it in their friends. I've seen it all, all along the way. And I think one of the things we've done a decent job with is kind of in partnership with the Ed Fund, and I'm sure Karen will talk about this as well, is that providing additional resources when it comes to people in the building to actually help the kids and know that they're there is a huge step. We got a grant from the city as well to help address that. I think the other aspect of it that's super important is the fact that we have to tackle it from multiple angles. Students today deal with their friends who are coming to them first and foremost with problems, and the students are left with, without knowing the avenues they have as resources to go search out those things, whether it's a social worker or a psychologist. It's important to teach those people, the students, that those people are available for them and their families.
Ms. Gable.
So three things come to mind when I think about the answer of this question. First of all, it's listening to our students. As the co-chair of the Edina Education Fund, which has as one of our pillars, mental health support, I will tell you, every one of our Ed Fund student board member interviews, almost every one of them mentions mental health. And that was pre-pandemic. So this is something we, we know was an issue and our students are telling that. I also think our students have ideas about how, what they need. I remember one of our student board members saying, it's really hard for me to go to the office and find somebody to talk to. And so making sure that the solutions might be right there with our students. So bringing them to the table to say, what do you think we can, we can do a better job with? Partnerships. The Ed Fund just partnered with the city of Edina, and we were able to fund $200,000 mental health initiative to bring more mental health professionals into our schools, make sure that our teachers have professional development around this. And then I think system-wide approach, this is more than a school system can tackle. We need to demand that as a society, we are doing more around mental health work.
Mr. Michelson.
Well, first and foremost, we are doing our students, you all, the best service we possibly can with mental health. And that is giving you the chance to be back face to face, seeing each other, interacting with each other, having natural, social, spontaneous support with one another. I think that is just fantastic. And I just want to applaud everyone who's been a part of that. The second thing to bear in mind is that this, the stress we're talking about here pre-exists COVID, COVID actually, of course, created a huge spike in it. But we live in an achievement-directed community in which that's going to be a part of it. And one thing I'm very excited about and I want to reaffirm is the full menu of balanced programs that we have at school. Athletics to discharge physical energy, all sorts of other groups. And I've just got 15 seconds and I'm just about to wrap up. So we have to also partner with churches, synagogues, mosques, the families. This is something, as Karen, we just can't do it alone.
So I'd like to continue on this note of mental health. Surprisingly asked proposition was about for addressing and ameliorating mental health concerns at Edina related to Wednesdays. As you might have known, at the high school, every Wednesday was asynchronous. And so are you in support of returning to asynchronous Wednesdays at Edina and potentially giving students much deserved, or much needed in many eyes, break in the middle of the week with an asynchronous Wednesday? And we'll start with Mr. Michelson.
No, I'm not in favor of returning to the asynchronous Wednesday. The biggest reason is that you're losing all that face-to-face instructional time. And I think that that would set back our educational mission. The other thing is, in the case of teachers, it was useful to be able to recalibrate. And this is, and I think that we're past that point. So I would like to continue having full instruction for five days a week.
Thank you. Mr. Birdman.
Forgive me, but can you please define what, what is the asynchronous Wednesdays? What was the point and what, how does it structure? I'm not familiar with that particular element.
So I can only speak to my own personal experience. But generally speaking, on Wednesdays, you were allowed to stay at home. And if you did need to meet with a teacher, you could meet through Google Meet or in some cases even go in person to talk with your teacher. But generally speaking, that was a day for students to catch up on homework, they needed to, or potentially just take a, a break from school if they wanted to. And for teachers, it provided an opportunity, as Mr. Michelson alluded to, to potentially recalibrate and think about their curriculum moving forward.
Okay, thank you. That's a very interesting question. Hopefully I can get a little bit more than 15 seconds. Thank you. That, to me, what it sounds like to me is that there's trying to find space. They're trying to find time, both for the student and for the teacher, in order to manage what they have before them. I don't know if that's necessarily the best solution to do it as a full one-day component, but maybe there can be opportunities to modify that to be a half-day or a partial day of instruct, in-school, in-class construction, and then having some space for both the student and the teachers to then work on the things that they need to do, including finding time for their mental health.
Thank you. Ms. Allenberg.
So I can't say that I would be in favor of So I can't say that I would be in favor of adding in the asynchronous Wednesday, but what I would be in favor of is, it sounds like you've identified a problem, which is that students need some more time to get the stuff done, which Michael alluded to, some more breathing room. And what is the solution to that? And maybe the solution isn't a full day, but let's come up with the root cause, and then brainstorm together with students, parents, teachers. What do we need to do? Maybe part of it is cutting back mandatory practices for all the different activities, extracurriculars, and having one day a week that we leave open, that students have no extracurriculars after school. So it seems like there's some other problem-solving techniques that we could come up with that don't necessarily involve taking a full day out of school to balance the need for the academics. But I would love to talk more about this, because I know that it is an issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Ms. Gabler.
COVID has provided us an opportunity to reflect. And we've learned some things about ourselves, about our community, about our peers. And prior to COVID, our students were telling us that they had a lot of stress in their life. My question would be to this question about an async day would be, what did that asynchronous day provide for you? And then, as Erica talked about, was it balance? Was it a little break from the intensity of having classes and activities and all of that stuff? And if we can identify what that asynchronous day provided for our students, then I think we can get together around a table and talk with students, teachers, parents, look at best practice, and say, how do we, as a community, provide that for our students? And I think that's how we talk about, you know, working through. I wouldn't be for a full asynchronous day, but I think we can maybe have conversations around how we achieve what that asynchronous day gave our students.
Thank you, Ms. Gabler. And finally, Mr. Arum.
You know, I view things a lot of times in the world of balance, and I think that ultimately, that's what most students are striving for, is to get to that level of balance where they feel like they're in control of their own lives, as well as their, as their own workloads. It's an interesting concept that, you know, kind of reared its head in the middle of COVID and whatnot. And I guess I would look to talk to the teachers as far as whether or not it was a successful way to address the learning styles of all the children, and were they able to deliver interventions in a successful way by having an async day? I don't think I'd be in favor of a full async on a regular basis, based on what I know, just anecdotally from my family. But I think there are creative ways to introduce things where they help improve the balance between the students' lives and the teachers' lives and the administration's lives. I think there might be opportunities as well to look at different ways to schedule middle and elementary schools that might address some of those concerns as well.
Thank you. The next question pivots to the topic of sustainability. Many people in our generation feel passionately about the environment and environmental stewardship. What steps, if any, should Edina Public Schools take to move towards greater sustainability in its schools? And this question will first go to Mr. Birdman.
Thank you for the question. I certainly recognize that this is a key concern for not only our student population, but for many people in our community. When you look at what the City of Edina is doing in its sustainable efforts, I think there's a lot of lessons that EPS can take from there as well. How can we take actions to not only reduce our costs, but also reduce our carbon footprint, and make our costs associated with running the schools as low as possible? That helps everybody. I'm not familiar with the specifics of what EPS is doing today, and that's something I'd have to learn. But what I do think is, is that we can certainly prioritize programs that are geared towards reducing our energy output, our energy consumption, and our ability to lower our costs through different mitigation efforts. I believe that students can certainly be an added stakeholder in figuring out what are the best innovative ways in which we could approach things at the facilities and within our processes within the schools, to be able to make a better example for what we can do going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Michelson.
This is a great question, and I would like to have as many sustainable efforts done in our school district as possible. If we could do solar panels, electric buses, and make it economically feasible, I am very enthusiastic about that. That's the big thing. Is it economical? That's the big question. Now, since you're all students, let me turn this around. What are you doing about it? I'm a former backpacking guide. For five summers, I backpacked in New Mexico, and I take environmental sustainability really seriously. When I go to work, I either bike downtown, or I take the bus, or I take my electric hybrid. How about your vacations? Are you flying? Can you drive? Do you consider that? This is a question that we just can't ask in the abstract. We all have to think about what our own personal behavior is in this area.
Ms. Gabler.
I'm glad this question was asked. We know that this is an important issue to our students and many of our community members. Your generation is arguably grasping better than my generation, is that climate action is essential. I think it comes back to looking at partnership and student voice. We have our Project Earth Club at the high school that I know has been working with the district to try to adopt a sustainability plan. We have some work being done. We have solar panels put on our bus garage, and one of our elementary schools, and I believe the high school. So looking for opportunities to do further that. We also have, we could partner with our city to try to better reach their City of Edina Climate Action Plan. So those are some partnerships that I think we can be a part of when it comes to doing some more sustainability work. And this is a great opportunity for student voice to be at the table. Where can we do better?
Mr. Arum.
From the aspect of students as stewards, I like to call it, you are all students, or you're advocates for these changes, and these are important issues to you all. I think the most important thing that we can do from that perspective is to kind of foster that, that information and the ability for you to do that. I think what we can do essentially is, public and private partnerships are a key part of it. I think we can essentially say that engaging the student groups and the different individuals with the city and the different partnerships with private business and public entities, whether it's solar panels on buildings and whatnot, those are the jobs of the future, right? And so part of our strategic plan is creating life-ready students. And by encouraging those partnerships and essentially taking the, giving the opportunity for the students to address those, and being advocates within their own families, within this community, and within the business community, is an opportunity that we can seize upon as a school district.
Ms. Allenberg.
I would like to see our district partner with the city with their environmental action plan. To me, that's the quickest and most efficient way to see immediate change. I would have to guess that our district is probably one of the main users of energy and waste within the City of Edina. So to me, it only makes sense that we become part of their environmental action plan. I suggested at a prior forum that a board member, administrator, and a student join their committee. And so it becomes a partnership committee between the two of us, not just a city, and not having something from the school separate, but that we actually work together and have a dual environmental action plan together. But then I also agree with what Dan said. I think this is such an opportunity to have students really not just get involved in the planning, but coming up with ideas at their own school from an engineering perspective, to build skill sets that they can utilize for the rest of their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now, all of you either implicitly or explicitly alluded to the importance of student advocacy. But advocacy first needs to start with education and an understanding of environmental problems. So to that end, on these notes of environmental advocacy and education, what are your thoughts on incorporating greater environmental education into the curriculum at all grade levels across Edina Public Schools? And to start, we'll turn to Ms. Allenberg.
I have no issue with that, and I think there's a lot of that actually going on, on an ad hoc basis within the elementary schools. They learn about recycling, composting, and organics. So I think we do a lot of good work in there. In addition to that, the new science curriculum, we now are required to teach earth science. And a lot of that foundational curriculum in earth science is about weather and climate change. And so all students are going to be required to take that earth science class, to really do some deep dive into climate change, and how, how, how science is evolving, and how it's affecting our planet. But I have, I think that's a great idea, to build some of those components into our curriculum, and for our kids to learn about that throughout, throughout their grades.
Ms. Gabler.
Our state standards actually address environmental education, so I would also lean into those to look and see where we are doing that kind of work already. And as has been mentioned, we do some of this sporadically across the district. So I think I would, I think this is really important. So making sure that we are finding where those pockets, where we're doing this, and elevating that work. We also have a magnet program that we're looking at, a magnet school, that is going to potentially be a steam-based school. There is an opportunity, or excuse me, we're going to have steam across the system, but that would be an area too, where we can make sure we're elevating that kind of programming. And making sure that then it's trickling up, because it is, it is an important topic, and it is making sure that we are, making sure our students have an opportunity to learn this, discuss that, mentor each other. Some of our older students, down to our younger students, why don't we, we could have a Project Earth Club at the middle school. And those are just some of the ideas of what we could do to elevate that work.
Mr. Arum.
I think there's an incredible amount of opportunity for the school districts to weave into this, the environmental advocacy part into all the different levels of curriculum. I remember Creek Valley Elementary School, just being able to walk by Minnehaw Creek and seeing garbage there, and the impacts of society, you know, with road building, bridge building, all those different kinds of things. Visual pieces that impact children and their studies, and the way that they can do it. Fast forward to a middle school, where you're learning more about the environment from a science perspective, and how things work when it comes to composting, and, and just geological things with that part. Fast forward that to the high school level, where you're talking, where you can advocate for different things in the government, and different things within, within your own household, within lobbying the state, and different things you can do to impact the overall thing, as well as job training for the future. So I think there's ways to integrate all these different things into the educational path. That'd be great to do. Thank you.
Mr. Michelson.
As I stated earlier, I take environmental sustainability very seriously, and it's a personal decision we all have to make. And we only have one earth. We've got to take care of it. And I want to have environmentalism woven throughout all of our curriculum from K all the way up to 12. So then it becomes an issue of trade-offs, because trade-offs exist everywhere, whether we want them to be there or not. And if we, we have to know, when do we back off from this? Because we don't want to displace core academics that can be useful to all of you students in other areas. So I'm a little concerned that some of the educators, some of the new standards have gone too far in that direction. The other issue is, strong as I am on this, I am not someone who believes in the environmental catastrophe that just is coming in 10 years. I think that breeds panic among us. We have to be level-headed about this. So I don't want to advocate. That is exactly what I don't want to have. It's education.
And finally, Mr. Birdman.
Just like we were talking about mental health, I think in the environment and the impacts of the environment across all of our lives, not just here in Edina, not just here in Minnesota or the United States, but across the world, this is what we're going to be dealing with. So providing the level of education to make first awareness of what the core issues are from the very earliest of, of grades, all the way up through high school, I think is critically important. So I would support that. But I also think we need to be able to understand and break down, what are the key elements for the environmental concerns that we have today? And then what are the actual things that we can do as part of this education, steps that we can actually take individually and as a society in order to address them? What I really want to emphasize in the education process is, how can students come up with innovation, how they can come up with programming, to where they can then actually make a actual difference in moving our society forward in managing this crisis? Thank you.
Thank you. The next question pertains to a topic that many of your responses touched on, and that's the student voice in district decision-making. Although most students in the district don't have the ability to vote, their lives are significantly impacted by school board decisions. Do you believe more can be done to better incorporate student voices into district decision-making? And this question will first go to Ms. Gabler.
The short answer is yes. We can do a better job about this. As I alluded to before, as the chair of the Ed Fund, I've had a chance to work with students, and I am always impressed with what our students bring to the table. And they, last year, when we were hearing a lot about more mental health needs, we were the people that sprung into action and did something about it. And so we tried to raise more awareness around it, and we started with an idea to actually have a, kind of a panel. And it was our student board members that said, "Uh-uh. That's not what students want right now. This is what they need." And from there, their voice kind of directed some of how that final product turned out. And it was a step. It was a start. But it was one of those opportunities where student voice was driving what the final product was. And so I would love for us to do more of that. I know there's been a little bit of it here and there, and at the high school for sure. But we have amazing students in this district, and they have great ideas to share. And I would love to see them part of our board decisions, and part of some of the everyday decisions that our district has.
Mr. Arum.
You know, having high school students and recent graduates, I've been able to witness firsthand the incredible students at Edina High School. I sit, I had the great opportunity to sit in with the EHS Summit this summer, where Principal Beaton and Superintendent Stanley gathered a group together, and had the students actually lead the discussion groups from the community, a cross-section of the community, students, faculty, and staff. And I tell you what, I mean, these kids are some of the most amazing people I've been around. And we literally, to challenge them is, from a perspective of leading groups, we do, we shortchange them by not giving them the opportunity to do that. We should, we are all better off listening to their voice, the way they interact with teachers, the way they interact with boards, the way they do all that stuff. It is an incredibly important piece, and I think that we underutilize that, and I think we could do a better job at that as a board.
Mr. Birdman.
Well, absolutely, yes. We definitely need to find ways to incorporate student voices more effectively. One of my experiences has been, I worked with the City of Edina on the Heritage Preservation Commission for eight years. I was the chair for six years. Every board and commission of the City of Edina has two student members that are a part of the commissions and boards. They are active members on the boards. They don't get to vote, but they do get to have comments. They do get to provide their opinion. Why we don't have that at the school board, I don't know, but that would be one of the easiest ways in which we can make sure students have voices there. I think we could build curriculum in government, classes in the high school, to where we could then be able to figure out how, they could even get credit for doing that, to be able to make that happen. So I think the critical thing is not just giving them access and being at the table, which I think is, is an important element, but we also need to give empowerment to figure out how we can incorporate our students and their ideas into meaningful actions that can actually make a difference for what we're trying to accomplish with our goals. That's how I would approach that. Thank you.
Ms. Allenberg.
I think absolutely. I echo what almost, well, what everyone else has said. I think it's such an important voice to have. The decisions that we make directly impact the day-to-day lives of the students in our district. And I'm always blown away by how, not just intelligent, but intuitive, and the things our students come up with. I'm like, "What? I should have come up with that." So yes, absolutely. Something that I found very valuable as a board member last year was the Student Summit that we did on equity, and we had teams of students come and present to us ideas that they had, of things that we could do better as a board from an equity perspective. I would love to do a series of those every year, or something similar. I think right now, mental health is something I would like to have something formalized around how we can, as leaders, get feedback from students about mental health, and some of these pressing issues coming out of the pandemic. Thank you.
Mr. Michelson.
I am very excited about this idea, because I've got one idea in specific, and that is surveys. I would like to see scientifically-based surveys nationally normed that are developed... I would like to see scientifically-based surveys nationally normed that are developed externally to Edina that have a set of representative questions that are asked year in, year out, so that we can start establishing baselines, we can start establishing trends. I'd like this for teachers, students and parents. This will take out some of the guesswork in our work, in our, in monitoring the schools. For instance, we're talking about mental health. We're kind of doing, okay, it's anecdotal, it's, it's not really precise. I would like to get instruments in place that create a great deal of precise understanding about the sentiments of these three groups. And there are organizations such as Panorama, some other national groups that can provide this sort of survey support for us.
Thank you so much to the candidates. Now move on to another topic that's been discussed very frequently and that's vaping. In recent years, there's been a significant increase in the number of students to use e-cigarettes or vape, both in the high school, but also in the middle schools at Edina. How should schools play a greater role in the prevention of underage vaping at Edina public schools? And to start, we'll look to Mr. Arum.
The role that schools play, I think, when it comes to public health issues related to vaping and other, you know, other drugs, I think it's, it's addressed first by education. I think it's, you know, we all went through our health class in eighth grade and whatever grades we do in personal wellness and those types of things. That might have to start at an earlier age because it is being more pervasive in the community and, and society in general. I think beyond vaping, that is a concern. I also have concerns when it comes to prescription drug abuse and other different areas when it comes to alcohol and other things. I think that those issues are all accelerating to younger ages and they're becoming more pervasive on whether it be social media or whether it's on just the community in general. I think that we can do a better job with education as well as the implications and impact in, when it comes to enforcing the rules around them.
Well, next here from Ms. Gableer.
I agree that this is a problem. I see it in my community college students and they're older. But we do have a policy around illegal substances. However, policy only goes so far. We need to make sure that we are educating around substance abuse. We need to make sure that we are providing assistance when it becomes a bigger issue. We need to make sure that our students feel supported. How do they get help? We have Candy Davenport over at the high school who is a chemical health support person and is, I'm sure that her job has become quite difficult over the last five, 10 years. This is also another area where I think partnerships would be important. We all play a role in working towards addressing vaping and substance abuse with our students. And so this is a problem that's bigger than Edina. How do we bring more people around this issue, other districts, to capture some ideas around what we can do with substance abuse with our kids?
Mr. Birdman.
This is a very important question and a very important concern. I always look at it this way as to these things are happening to whatever degree they are, whether it's in the middle school or the high school. Yes, education is very important. I agree that commit with partnerships and how do we all collectively do this? The city of Edina works on these types of programs as well. So the big thing here is, is how do we not only educate and make awareness, not just for the substance abuse for the student, okay, but how do we then work with all the other stakeholders who are a part of that? So our families, our staff and the community at large. How do we provide an entire construct, an environment that speaks to this issue, to make it aware of it, so that we can see the signs and we can see what's happening? When someone chooses to go down this path, we need to treat it as not a disciplinary issue, but more as a, just like a mental health crisis, how do we provide the help of what the underlying problem is that causes someone to eventually use substances and abuse them? Thank you.
Mr. Michelson.
This is another example of why I want surveys. I'd like surveys to find out when kids are starting to vape. These surveys, of course, would be anonymous, but we would know general characteristics of our student population. And vaping is, it's an age-old problem. Kids would smoke in the bathroom when I was in high school, probably for everybody else here. So kids experiment, kids, kids push boundaries. So we've got to understand that that's an aspect of being your age. I want to reinforce the instruction we've got to inform our students how dangerous it is, what are lifelong consequences that can arise from this behavior. I want to encourage the enforcement. I think we're doing a pretty good job of enforcement. And I want to reinforce the things that remain, strengthen the things that remain. And this is a call-out to you all being in debate and being in a very constructive alternative activity, sports and band too.
Thank you. And then finally, we'll turn to Ms. Allenberg.
So I agree with everything my colleagues have said. I think a couple of things that, in addition to what had been said, educating students is great. I do think it needs to start younger and younger these days. I think we could do a better job monitoring the hallways and bathrooms at our schools. But two things I really want to key in on, one is parent education. I think that things evolve so quickly that we really need to educate parents about what kids are doing these days because my head is stuck back in the eighties where like it's completely different world these days. And the second is, these issues don't start or end in our school system. And as a community, we need to hold ourselves accountable and responsible for controlling these activities outside of the school system, just like we have the expectation that our administrators are going to hold kids accountable inside of the school system. And if we're not going to do it as a community, it's hard to control it inside the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the final question. Many LGBTQ plus students feel that there's a lack of representation in curriculum at Edina Public Schools. Do you feel that Edina Public Schools could do more to ensure the representation of LGBTQ plus experiences in classes such as health, history, English and other classes? And this question will first go to Mr. Michelson.
I saw this on the set of questions that you sent to us last week. And this is a difficult one because we want to honor people's lifestyles and their choices. We also want to honor the religious orientations of people, of families. And this would be something that we would really need to visit in depth to see what the boundaries of those are. In one area in particular, in sex ed, for instance, I think that we should cover the basics and then leave that up for the families. I think like any social phenomenon, LGBT needs to be addressed and should be addressed for a full, balanced representation of that aspect of our community. So yes, we do need to talk about LGBT issues.
Mr. Arum.
Yes, I would say that we should increase our representation. Mr. Birdman talked about earlier about the diversity of our staff and our, the administration and everything, all-inclusive that makes up this district. And I think that we have an opportunity from that standpoint to provide, provide people who can represent those in the community and the students and support them. I think it's a challenge when it comes to the mental health aspect of it, that we need to have resources in place that allow students to find people that they can talk to, people they can trust. I think that ultimately, the representation piece of it will come and evolve with, just by, by nature, but we have to be very intentional about what we're doing. From the perspective of overall student voice and whatnot, I think that it's important to represent those voices, whether it's through a club or through the actual education process. Thank you.
Ms. Allenberg.
Can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I answer it correctly.
Yes. Many LGBTQ plus students feel that there's a lack of representation in the curriculum at Edina Public Schools, especially related to LGBTQ plus communities. And do you feel that Edina Public Schools should do more to ensure the representation of LGBTQ plus experiences in classes such as health, history and English?
Thank you for doing that. Yes, I do. The first I'd like to say to any of our students that are LGBTQ plus that I hope that you feel that you can be yourself in our school system. The ability to achieve academically and feel safe and supportive often is a reflection of seeing yourself in the curriculum, in the books. And if that's not being done, then absolutely we need to do a better job about that. I hear similar feedback for students that are in the special education realm. And so I'm, I'm fully supportive of that. And I think that's something that we need to work towards as a school system, to fully realize diversity. It is not, as Michael said, just about race. It's about sexual orientation, it's about gender, it's about ability, it's about race, it's about religion. And make sure that we are, making sure all of our students are represented in our curriculum and the books that we provide them. Thank you.
Mr. Birdman.
You know, having representation both in curriculum and also a presence within the school system so that people can be their authentic self and be able to feel safe and accepted in that way, I think is critically important. And we need to find the space and find the, the areas to be able to do that. The challenge I find is that, you know, how do we engage in it in a meaningful way? That's not just window dressing. And I think that's the biggest challenge to figure out. And I, I don't know if I have the exact answers for that, but looking at the different stakeholders that would be involved, how can we provide programs? How can we provide assistance? How can we provide prioritization within curriculum? Just like we were talking about the diversity elements that we were discussing earlier, this is one, another element to that. The main thing is, is that we want to, we want people to be able to be their authentic self and be able to feel that they can be in a safe place to be able to experience that, not, hopefully not be judged, but also be able to recognize that they are one element of a broad, diverse community. They're just one element of that and they should be accepted for that. Thank you.
Ms. Gableer.
Yes, I think we could do a better job. We need to make sure that we're listening to our students and our parents when they tell us that there's room for improvement. Representation matters. And it matters in the staff members that are teaching our kids. It matters in the resources we have available. It matters in our curriculum. And it matters to those kids that identify as LGBTQ and it matters to my kids. It makes us stronger when we are more diverse of, diverse student body and everybody has a chance to express themselves. I think I would like to, as a board member, better understand where we could do better, where there's some ideas for us to do a better job with our curriculum. And I also want to touch on something and that involves community education. We, as a group of voters, grew up in a much different time than our students did. And time has marched on and we need to make sure that we are also educating as a community to make sure that our city is an inclusive city for all people.
Thank you all so much to the candidates. That is all the time we have for questions. Before we get to closing statements and Izzy wraps it up with the moderator's conclusion, I also want to take just a few moments to extend a few thank yous once again and affirm some of those thanks to some people who've been really instrumental in this. Obviously first, the League of Women Voters for helping out and providing equipment and logistical know-how. To the candidates, for your willing participation, it really means a lot. And, you know, we're hoping to make this a staple of Edina elections, be it city council or school board. To Izzy for being an incredibly great moderator and someone who's been great to work with on this. To our timer, Anushka, for helping out so much and being really stellar with timing. To the debate team, obviously, and to the coach, Joe Schmidt, for all that he's done. And then obviously to the city of Edina itself. And I was unable to catch his name, but there's someone back there right in front of me who's been helping out with the camera work and everything and he's been a magician with that. So really appreciative of that. But anyway, enough soapboxing. We're now inviting every candidate to make their closing statements. And so we'll go in reverse order from opening statements, which means that we will start with Ms. Gableer.
First, I want to thank the Edina High School Debate Team for hosting this candidate forum and thank you to the attendees for watching tonight to learn more about the candidates' free Edina School Board. These may be our most challenging questions we've faced yet. Good job, you guys. It is no surprise that I love education, our schools and this community. I see our potential when the right pieces are in place. If something is possible in education, it can happen here in Edina. I have a lot of pride in our schools, in our students and in this community, and yet I know we should be constantly striving to improve and elevate our work to make sure we are providing Edina excellence for all of our students. Several factors set me apart as a candidate for school board. First, my 20 years of being a classroom educator. Our board doesn't have an educator on it and I believe that when policy is being made that impacts what is happening in the classroom, it is beneficial to have someone with a background in education at the table. I've also been actively involved in our schools over the past 10 years and I have three students currently in our schools. All that experience has provided me with a working relationship with the people doing the work inside our schools and an understanding of the areas where we are thriving and room for improvement. Edina is an exceptional school district and we have proven time and again that when we come together, we can achieve exceptional things. But for that to happen consistently and efficiently, it will take people on the board who have the vision for what we can be, the skills to bring people together and the commitment to get the work done for each and every Edina student. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gableer. Mr. Birdman.
I too wish to thank you, the student debate team and our moderators for an excellent forum this evening. Thank you for the attendees and the opportunity to continue to speak to you as a school board candidate. It's been a very interesting campaign. It's my first one I've ever done. It's been wonderful to be out there in the community, talking to different people, listening to people, trying to understand what the issues are and acknowledging that we don't all agree on everything that we want to get done. When we talk about diversity, there's also diversity of thought, right? How do we actually work with people that don't agree with us? How do we do that? One of the critical things that I always think about is, as us adults up here trying to adult, right? How are we modeling to our students? How are we modeling to our children? How we deal with disagreement? How we deal when we don't agree on what's, what the right course of action is? I fundamentally believe that we have an opportunity, because we all care very deeply about what we're trying to accomplish here for the Edina Public Schools and for all of you students. We have to show up better to be able to make sure we're listening, we're trying to understand and we're acknowledging the different points of view that are there and working very diligently to try to put actions into, like the questions that you asked tonight, what are the actual things we can accomplish in making that happen? You have my commitment that that's what I'm here for. And if I'm elected to the school board, that's what I'll do every day showing up for you. I hope I can get that opportunity. Don't forget, November 2nd is the vote and most people out there, there are four votes that you can cast. I'd like you to cast the one for Michael Birdman. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Birdman. We'll now turn to Mr. Michelson.
Hey, this has been fun. I realized this is my ninth candidate forum over two elections and I think this has been the most fun. I really felt challenged by these questions. It's made me think. And I would like to depart by returning the favor to you students. I've got a few questions for you. Brought some of these up before. Do you believe in limiting principles? Do you believe diversity and inclusion and equity? Are they universals? Do they have limiting principles? Do they come at any cost? Does merit get tied into this? Is assimilation a profanity? Is racial harmony and the prosperity of this possessed group only achievable through diversity, inclusion and equity? Is America irredeemably racist? Is a post-racial America possible? Did you know that there's some African-Americans who are not on board with the diversity, inclusion and equity agenda? Have you heard of Thomas Sowell? Bob Woodson? Glenn Lowry? Kendall Qualls? If you haven't, why not? Is America failure? Is there anything successful in our society, economy and government? And is that worth celebrating?
Thank you so much, Mr. Michelson. And we'll now turn to Ms. Allenberg.
I have lived in Edina for 18 years and it is my home. And there's rarely been a day I've not spent thinking about or actively doing something for our school system. Whether I was spending time on a field trip at the zoo, coaching a Lego robotics team or vacuuming up popcorn at the end of a school carnival. Why do I do this, you might ask? The answer is really quite simple. I so fundamentally believe in supporting our students, teachers, staff and public education system that this is my true passion in life. I believe in Edina Public Schools and I believe in our future. I have really valued this time tonight. I have really valued this time tonight to learn more about the topics that are important to the students in our district, and I hope this can be a launching point for greater utilization of student voice at the board level. I'd also like to remind students that your voice doesn't need to stop with this forum. You can always email the board or come to board meetings to share your thoughts at any of our regular board meetings. Many of you, if you're seniors, are of voting age, and how great would it be that your first vote be on something that impacts you so directly, your own education? So get out there and vote, and remind your friends and family members to vote. In 2015, 19 votes was the difference between third and fourth place for school board, which means 19 people decided who sat on our school board. I'm excited at the prospect of working four more years for students, parents, and other stakeholders, holders, and ask for your support in this election. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allenberg. And finally, Mr. Arum.
Thank you for the Edina debate team and the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. You know, I had this great closing statement that I worked on for too long, but I decided I'm going to kind of avoid that and kind of just talk a little bit more directly with all of you for this closing. To me, why I'm here, service really matters to me, right? I'm here because I was in community service, and that's kind of moved on to public service in this instance. I'm here to serve you as students, future generations of students, the community. And ultimately, my role in this, in this part of it is to help you all succeed in life, right? And whether that comes in the sense of improving mental health opportunities or mental health resources for you, or creating different opportunities for you to succeed in life, whether it's through academics, athletics, activities, any of those things, that's the role I see myself in, right? The work that I've done, whether it's been coaching or whether it's been sitting on Edina Parks and Rec Department here, trying to get the dome built, or different things that we do when it comes to providing public, public and private partnerships, those opportunities will help shape you as a student in the future. And I think the reality is, is that we need to engage the community, engage the parents, engage the all of you, because the gifts that you all bring to this community are stronger than almost anything that I can bring to this table. So I think that we should recognize that and appreciate that and deliver those for the next generation of Edina students. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. And I'd like to take this opportunity once again to thank you all for participating in this forum. And I'd also like to once again thank the Edina debate team and League of Women Voters, as well as Anoth for organizing this with me. As a reminder, the forum has been videotaped, and it will be available to view online through the City of Edina and on broadcast on Edina TV. And it will also be on the City of Edina's website and on its YouTube. So thank you all to the audience for attending tonight's forum as well. And please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd, or through early voting here at the City Hall. And especially, I'd like to encourage any students who will be 18 to please vote in this election. And if you won't be old enough to vote, make your opinion known. And this concludes the forum for the School Board, District 273.